Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Benny, you had swallows, right?
Yeah, I'm still happy to be here.
The piston. All of a sudden, you just go.
Maybe I was there. I just stuck my chair.
Thank you for saying that.
I know. It always gets me when I see Dave. Sitting in his lane, leave that, and I'm like, I thought I'm gonna go over and like spread them like that.
Well, it's. Right. Say that so that they're going, oh, man.
It's not, it's not good.
You making some definitely do that.
It's what happens with the buildings, and they made, in a way that.
I'm like, show I'm like. We've definitely spoke about that. That's awesome. How are your scarf, your jacket? What? Your boot camp jacket? Your boot camp jacket? Oh. Still? Yes, I can wear it.
Good for you.
I can wear my whole year's. We made him take a picture, he was not happy.
He's gonna be very happy. Couldn't have been anything of mine. Thanks, not a problem. Hi, how are you?
Hold around. Hold on a minute. Something's a little bit. I wonder.
I'm trying to figure out what I'm saying. Maybe I have another office room. When you came in.
What was that? Okay.
Now, I hope. Maybe she's supposed to be there. See, my father came. My lot up there. But I don't think, maybe he has a friend that I think. You know. I haven't saved. There are just. We call it. And once you're in. Hanging out. We would shut eight four out. Definitely love the view. They'll try crack that.
My laws there? Is that a clean bunch of? You know what's more. Where's you went? That's, that's.
Yeah, just trying to lay the set. He been in this sort of. If I. Want to find. I think it's. That's what he asked.
Two of my people. Right, I was calling. Uh, four years. It's four years. I got it. Forty five.
Well, we've been.
Let me see that more. We get the radio coming.
Mark.
Yeah, one weekend, it's a, yeah.
Not by five thirty eight. It is. But I. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna open the workshop meeting tonight. And Paul's not here, but then we can have leaders open.
What do we? One nation under God. It is all liberty to each other for all.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you, everybody. So we have exits out, the one exit out of the front building, one out of the back building. If there's an issue, please just divide up and go your way, or obviously where the fire is. And if you can ask that, we give people on the Zoom side of the meeting a chance to finish what they're speaking about, or whatever they're expressing because of the lag in the Zoom. Alrighty. So the meeting is officially open. We'll have the meeting minutes to approve next week. And under new business, we have special use permit from Travis Clem. Review that as application and plan to circulate to the board. We have the applicant here to speak up ahead of him. How are you? Say your name so everybody can hear. Turn the mic down, if you don't mind. Maybe you have to do the same. Everybody on the table, at the board, on the board?
My blood, closer to.
Close, yeah. Sometimes we're hard to hear.
My name is Ricky, this is Harry. I'm representing Mr. Clem of New York City.
Okay. Anybody from Stan? Anybody on us?
No, this is pretty straightforward. If you look, I'm gonna share my screen with the at-home audience. This is the property. It's off Falcon Drive, which is off Station Road. The array is set well back from Falcon Drive in this location. And because I know you guys like this stuff, I also pulled up the parcel viewer. This is the property. Here's the house that's being constructed, or is constructed. The array is gonna be somewhere over here. So to the rear of these properties, these properties will never, ever even see it. It's gonna go right about there.
Right. Anyone else? Questions? Concern? Paul? Anybody from the board? Nope.
Stretching your regular face. East.
I'm sorry.
Direction.
South.
Southeast?
Yeah.
Okay, so there'll be no.
No.
Alright, so I guess next week, pretty much go over this, right?
Uh, yes, so. So yeah, next week instead of public hearing, for the following month.
That's right.
And then, you know, we'll see you back here on that, on that date, which, I'll tell you. Sorry, I wasn't thinking ahead. The twenty-sixth of October. For the public hearing. At seven o'clock in this room. Assuming the board sets a public hearing, right?
Yeah, we're not. On its committee day promotion. With the public hearing. We can do it that way, or not?
I guess they can move to set the public hearing, yeah?
Well, second. Thank you. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing next month. Is there any way to October twenty-third, go through the, the hearing? And now? I mean, it's, it's a pretty straight. We need shit that the public speak on, in case the neighbors have something to say. We've got to give them the opportunity.
I thought he was gonna start the thirty days now.
No, the, the, the public hearing will be on the twenty-sixth of October in this room. And if all goes well, you could have an approval that night.
You're getting some. Okay. Thank you. Robert Whalen, special use permit. Application, plans, and surveys been circulated to the board. Please state your name, and who you are, because you may not be the applicant, you may be someone representing them. Robert Whalen, two hundred three Tow Street. I see the permit for the accessory apartment on my thought. Anyone from Stan?
Yes, we've looked at this before. If you recall, this is the house on the corner there. This is Costa Road. This is, this is the property here. It's a beautiful home. Nice pull-up back. And I think I have, do I have that? No, I don't. Yeah, so it's pretty straightforward.
They were in a couple of months ago about something about this building, weren't they?
That's right.
Yep. And I believe, what was it? You were dividing the building?
I'm adding on to the garage.
That's what it was. So it's a garage on one side, accessory apartment on the other. That, yeah.
You got it.
So we'll do the same on this. Anyone from Stan can speak to us? So then we'll do the same if we can have a motion instead of public hearing for next month. Motion. Next act. Thank you. All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Being none? Motion carry to move to next. Gotta let the public know, and next month.
October twenty-sixth at seven P M.
Thank you. Thank you. Dave, you wanna say something else, too? If you had the mic up, I wasn't sure.
I really love this house.
Yeah, it is.
Really do. Thank you.
Okay, under old business, we have Walton subdivision, one and five Fifty Woods Roads, section block and lot number ninety-four point two dash two, dash eighteen. Eighteen point one three oh. And ninety-four point two dash two. I, I'm sorry, I should have said that, because I have it as remotely done. So top of which had been apex. Apologies.
At, at their request.
At their request, sorry. So, guys, sorry. Let's see if there's anything else. Okay, updated map was circulated to the board. We have someone from the applicant to speak on it.
No, no, Patty's in someplace Midwest at a conference. I know Sue's on, but I don't know that she was going to speak. You've all seen the new map. If you recall, there was an additional lot originally, which was the, if you look at the map, it's lot three, but it was carved up. This is now just a lot line and subdivision, the flag lots in the rear. And the other two lots are adjusted slightly for acreage. One in the back is the wedge, you see here, and this one is sort of just for the driveway.
You did bring this, we did speak to this last month, if I'm not mistaken. Frank, didn't she present it?
I don't think so. She and I, she and I spoke about it, about ways to kind of figure out a better layout. I did hear, Christian, you had a question about new EAF. So Sue, if you're listening, we might need a new EAF on this. I don't remember if Patty submitted one with the map. Sue works for Patty.
I will check on that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Several, you know, plan-related comments, just wanna make sure that the area of the service is left in danger, so it doesn't trigger the speeding permit. Power lines and control plans, appropriate notes. The existing tenant appears when approached on lot one. Needs to be moved as part of the action, or not.
This is on a different property? You mean this one right here?
Yeah, that one right.
Well, I mean, I guess we could ask them, but it's not part of the action, so.
But isn't that lot one part of that being?
Yeah. Yep.
And, you know, administrative.
So those are a couple of questions that you're gonna have to have.
Yeah, I think, Sue. Yeah, so I think Patty said she'd be here for the regular meeting. So new EAF and a, and whatever the comments, whatever she has on that shed. Because you're right, Christian, that lot one is part of this action, right? Because we're carving a piece off of it. So a question about that shed. You know, it's a half a footer overhang. Of course, the other side of the line, the garage is right up against it, isn't it? Yeah, good times.
Okay, I'll make a note of that, too.
Thank you. Alright, thank you. We're gonna push this one off till next week. We get more information. Okay, there's public hearings. We're gonna only do the ones that are here, obviously. We have minor pelusi, lot line revision subdivision. We have updated plans that circulated to the board. Public hearing was set for September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, which is next week. Was anyone here, want to speak of it, on anything, any part of it? Advocate, nobody? You have cooking those food, the amended site plan? The public hearing is open on June twenty-second. Is there? You.
Again.
Over a little bit?
Again, Patty's in, right, out of state, so I do have the map. Right there. This is for state plan, yes.
Zoom in a little bit on that, Dave, if you don't mind. And if I'm not mistaken, I looked at this print earlier in the week, and I still didn't see the fences there. Shouldn't they have fence markings on there? Where they're gonna put those lock fences, so that nobody drives in and out of the side property?
There's a proposed gate, I'm circling to the mastermind.
Okay. I didn't, I don't know why, see, is there supposed to be another one in the back?
Nothing in the back.
Proposed gate. Alright, I gotta apologize, I see it now. I missed it. But I'm wondering. Doesn't, isn't supposed to go parallel with the side of the building there?
This gate?
We, we wanted to go.
This gate?
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm assuming that this is a ramp down from this area. So if that's the old drive. Right?
You'd want it to go. You know. The opposite way it is, right, wouldn't you? What are you doing? We, we were talking about this, just wanna keep people from going, they can go around that hole, right?
Right.
I'm just throwing it out.
They go through the ball. Depends how, sort of there.
I don't know, what do you guys think about blocking them out, engineer? Just a concern, like I said, if that brother got the access to go around that hole, there's only a gravel road for the whole part. Yeah, we had a general comment.
Just, um.
Sorry, just extend gate or provide a different preference to either that gate, but then access around it. Like some of the drive on the walk the walk the gravel. Hard surface and skirt around it.
It does not appear that this gravel drive will continue to back.
Can you go back up the? That one seems to be going the right way, but yeah. Just wanna keep anybody from going back in there and creating a disturbance in the neighborhood. Anyone else ever?
Love it, right out there. I mean, there's nothing much going on back there.
Well, that's it for all the hard work they put into cleaning it up. Anyone else?
The only other comments we had were the area by the eighty-eight space for loading and loading to the eighty foot wide, I thought, was a bit less than that. And regarding the area where they're adding a blacktop. None of it, the board wanted them to provide a lighting plan to the podium, that's the first gamble measurements. They provided cut sheets for the fixtures, but they didn't provide a separate landing plan. That's on the, the board would like to see to verify that they don't like. And I get what the light up there, if anything.
I think that's a great idea, is to have some sort of quality, to show how much light's gonna be bearing out. Whether or not safe enough for anybody who's walking through there.
Always.
That's really a good question. What's the purpose of lights on the back of the building?
Probably for just security. I don't know if they're gonna be a motion sensor or timers. Well, one thing I see is that people are from the other end of that ramp. Off the back one of the building, they wanna have some visibility just for evidence, and what are you saying?
You were talking about on the existing building. Oh. Dave, can you slide that down a bit? See, are those lights right there? Light, another one on the the north end, the west, the east side? That one there, and that one there. Yeah, it would be shielded or something of that nature. We wanna keep the light going in and out of the property. You know, it's fifty feet, but.
They need to be sheltered anyway, the code requires it.
Anyways, that's another suggestion for capinos. Anyone else? Good? Good, Dave? Don't keep the public hearing open. Next on the agenda? Good, everybody? Next on the agenda is one eighty South Street LLC Commercial Site Plan. On or off?
Well, we got stuff today.
Well, we got stuff today. Yeah. When I first took the chair, you said it today, we ain't talking about it. Because there's, nobody's had a chance to review it, and I don't, I don't think it's there. We can beat it up now.
I'm good either way.
I mean, talk about it, you want a chance to look at it, or you're like?
No.
No?
Well, we want a chance to look at it. Yeah.
Has everyone seen their renderings? Or just the submitted?
Yeah, architectural drawings in next.
I'll show you.
Let's see.
Just for fun. Give me a sec.
There was something there.
So there are multiple variants. It's a hoop. So that's the variant one. This is variant two, sorry. The only difference is the swirl in the middle.
Oh, that's nice. Well, that definitely takes the flatness out of the side of the building.
Oh, it gets better. There is also, there's a red stripe. If you prefer red. And also a variant.
Well, I'm gonna say this, it's really not what we had asked for at all, right? Am I right in saying that? We were talking about some sort of projection, something coming out a little bit.
Free advocates here.
The advocates here? Oh, come on in. You just pulled up your project, sir. Well, let's just sit down and we'll beat you up on this one.
Thank you.
Say your name, so everybody knows who you are.
Peter Bantzen, Mac.
The microphone.
Speaking to the microphone, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Sit down.
So we looked at a couple of your renderings, still not giving the three-dimensional look. I mean, it looks different.
Well, we, the intent is to do, I know I might not show it there, but in, in pre-engineered and inset optic grid additions on the top. It's outset, and then there is a channel line. And we just have to figure it out in final design, you know, with the.
Well, when you figure it out, you'll be able to come to us and tell you what you have. Because I can't envision what it is you're talking about, and I'm in construction, too, and I don't see that. To me, it still looks like a flat building. That looks nice to all, all the different projections there, very three-dimensional, but when you come to that long part of the building, how long is that? The longest, flattest part?
Right, I don't have the architecturals here, but.
So that. Yeah, so you're looking at another to me, and I saw it from the road there, too. Although it's gonna look a lot better, don't get me wrong, in the building, it'll look a lot better. It's just, it's just too flat. I think that's the point Sal was trying to bring out.
Well, I can, I can definitely produce that cattle line of eight inches. Because I don't, other than other than changing the, the, the structure of the building, that's what I can do. With, with the secondary.
Can't do vertical columns or something in the front to make it look a little more broken, huh? That seems to be what I, I think Sal and I were talking about last time.
We don't, we don't use a lot of exterior vertical columns that they expose.
Okay, well, just because you don't use them, doesn't mean we don't, you know, we're gonna test, we, we want to. We have those buildings in, in the town of Lloyd on Route nine, on nine W, that are just flat buildings, and they don't really produce a nice, nice look. Especially on that small residential road, that's a long building, that's that's my opinion, guys, speak up. What do you think?
Yeah, Dave, can you go back to first pitch?
Your very first one?
Oh, yeah, right, right there where the break in the building is, between the first floor and the second floor. Yeah. Is it possible to take the second part of that, above that break, and maybe move it out to three feet? And in this way, it would look like it's a little larger than the body. I forgot about below the windows on that wall. Right at this break point here. This is your long wall, but right at this break point here, and you would actually move this out three feet from the wall. Could you do something like that? I mean, it's all steel, it's all, right? But that'll call, it's all horizontal girds, really.
Okay. Or just come down every, I don't know, say it's hundred fifty feet, every fifty feet come out with a column, large enough to make it look like it's a couple of different buildings. You understand what I'm saying?
Kind of break it up a little bit. Instead of one.
It sounds like you have the idea, we're not the architects, we're designing what we'd like to see.
It's better than it looks right now, and I'm not gonna, I'm personally not gonna beat you up over the looks of it, because it looks and my thing is, is how tall is it? How long is it? There's no dimensions, how old, how tall, and how long the old building version, the condition you're putting on here. There's nothing here to show us what can you help? Elevate, elevate.
Yeah, I have, I have a whole set of architectural, but I, I thought that we were just.
I mean, this is a lot of structure, you're probably limited, I mean, which, I mean, let's face it, you can throw a ton of money at it, I mean, I'm just kidding, I get that, but it's better than what it looks like now. I, I get, I get that, I just.
Anything, Bill?
I agree with Jared, it looks better than it does now. I don't know what you're actually looking for, but this, it looks better.
Just, if, if, one hundred, listen.
Something would break.
One hundred percent, I'm gonna tell you the same. I believe the building's gonna look a lot better than it does right now. But the same thing with the, the building that was on nine W, it didn't look good, being one big building, because somebody said, hey, just throw some more architectural something to it to make it look better. You know what I mean? So they did, they went with the points, the peaks and all that. So we're just saying. A little more dimension on that long flat building. Do you think about it? It just looks like a long flat building. That's all, you know. That's nice. That looks good like that. That's.
That's broke up.
And even with that, I can give the, I can give the shadow line at any elevation. But I mean, anything can be done. We can move it out three feet, but that's completely changing the structure.
Yeah, it's, well, I have your point. I see your argument, cause it's an existing structure where the other ones around nine W. Go for trash. This, you're kind of stuck.
Um, my sense is the board is looking for shadow lines. But some way to, some way to articulate, you know, the facade. You may not get full three dimension, but some way to, you know. A fo- like a faux column, something like that.
Full column out in the front, you know, an eight inch shadow line, you know, you got to.
This is all, this is all E face? This is all it, uh, if it's. This, what, what's the skin?
Metal pins, ar- architectural pin.
That's right. Oh, yeah, you showed me, that's right. Yeah, so.
So there's no way to build the column?
Well, the panels come panelized and it's sort of a snap together, screw together. But, but you're right, Scott, there, there, there is a way, just the colors may not. It'd be very difficult because the, these colors will be baked on.
Well, I need to say that we were looking for it and still didn't get it. I mean, something, I mean, if Sal was here today, he'd still be saying the same thing. And I, I'm saying the same thing too. I think a little depth to that building, the long hundred and fifty foot building would be a little better, but.
So are there any of these that you like, that you could, that I can, um. Right, add some dimension group or that with?
Yeah, you could do that and you can show us elevation drawings if you have.
I can do that.
He's asking, he's asking for what, what do you like?
Which one do I like? I actually like, well, I, now the board has talked about one. It doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, we don't care, we don't care what he likes.
It doesn't matter. The color doesn't matter to me. I mean, I don't.
But I mean, I, I'd like to bring in some hard copy.
Wave or heartbeat?
Uh, I like the heartbeat, to be honest with you.
The heartbeat.
Yeah, that's where we know you're still alive out there.
Yeah, that does, that does look good. On that side of the building, that's. Wave does look good on the other side.
So blue, blue heartbeat.
Blue heartbeat, that's it.
Is that it? It's not.
No, what else have we got? Any issues from, um. We had some, no, plenty of comments regarding the slip. I mean, we've just got some already submitted today. Okay, well, that part of the other process, if we're, a long time ago, this board will not take anything that's sent on the day of a meeting. And we'll go right back to his office and sit on his desk till the next meeting, just so you know.
I, I understand that. I didn't know that, uh, you know. Back to civil, I, I can't speak about the civil, so.
So you're the architectural guy with the building?
Really just the contractor.
So, so the, the other gentleman was the, the guy that we're talking.
Engineer.
The engineer. Brian, that's who we had mentioned about cleaning up the site, the debris on the site.
Correct.
And it looks like they did a fantastic job, but it's just they moved it to the back of the building. If anybody's been out there lately.
No, actually, I drive by and my wife tells me, oh, man, you can't just go in somebody else's property. She says, I'm going in. So I went in, but I didn't go to the back of the property. But I, I really commend you on how nice you did, but now Charlie says the fact you guys did clean it up. Yeah, so you did look before we asked. Basically picked it up, moved it to the back.
What, what message can I give the symbol? You just haven't reviewed it yet, right?
Yeah, we haven't had the opportunity to review. It was at our providing bar office today. Anything on that drain? Are we talking about anything on that drain?
Uh, I, so I, I talked to Andy today, um, or yesterday, when, when the hell did we talk? Um, uh, there was, uh, Andy still has a concern about where that drain runs, um. He, uh, I, you know, Chuck actually did show me some video back from September when we had that heavy rain. And the, uh, west side of South Street, um, you know, it was flowing into that pipe like. The other side, which I did not look at, must have been a fire hose out into the stream. So, um, Chuck did indicate that, uh. He believes that the concrete, uh, line something underneath that, uh, drop on the parking lot. And, uh, when I talked to Andy, our sense is if you can find the inlet and find the outlet and draw a straight line between them, it's gonna be on. Either side of that, and if that passes underneath the loading docks, that's a problem.
Right, and we talked about last time, possibility of moving it. Is there any way that they would make an interest in molding that line?
I mean, they're gonna have to excavate it for those docks anyway, so if it's there, they're gonna have to move it again.
And we also talked about something about easement for that also.
Yeah, so, um, exactly right, yeah.
So there's a little list of stuff.
I mean, I mean, Brian, Brian, if he found the outlet, he could just shoot a line to the inlet, because it's, I'm sure they didn't spend money on bends. Or send, or send somebody skinny.
Trying to get the county involved with that pipe?
Yeah, no, the county, I talked to, kind of, they don't. It's not their pipe. So I don't, they really don't want to know about it.
So I'm sorry, but one, but it's all about the pipe and the square.
I, I think it needs to be indicated on the map, uh, and if it passes underneath the, um, loading dock, it needs to be shown, rerouted. Yeah.
So what they can do is they can hire a company to come in and televise and navigate. And we'd like to see from the start to the end.
So it needs to be shown on the map.
Right.
The second thing was, we spoke about. Paul, you talked, uh, and easement, some, some sort of easement that says who's going to maintain that. And I don't know, did they talk about that last month? I'm not sure, I don't remember. Did they talk about since they were, they had it, it was on their property, they were gonna take care of it?
There was no, I don't remember that at all.
I know. It was a good turn of heart. Heartbeat flow.
Left view, render one A. Blue stripe two. Blue stripe two.
So my thing is always when you see a rendering, is that really what you're gonna get? This is kind of, we would hope to see exactly that, but we know we're not gonna see exactly that. So when you show us the elevations on, on, how it's gonna be drawn, elevations on paper, we have something that we can.
I can definitely provide the elevations, but I don't see any reason why we can't build it exactly like that.
Then that's what I want to hear, what I want to say.
Big stencil.
Yeah. What can I provide for next week, um? Is di- digital okay, or would you like some hard copies or?
Uh, I mean, instead of board one prints, we could look at elevations on, on like digital.
I'm digi- I'm good with digi. And I'll do the architectural and. One A, um, with some modification.
Yeah, great. That's, that's fine.
Show us the printing for line and it's.
For the, for the pipe.
And some, something that says it's an E.
Should, should some will be here next week?
I would have, I would have, I probably would say they should be for Andy, right? When you guys?
Yeah, good that Brian, especially if the line is shown.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay.
And I can, I can call it next week and just.
Anybody else? Any questions? We're all good? Thank you. Did you regret coming in today?
No, not at all. Perfect time.
In perfect time, thank you.
Take care.
Next on the agenda is surprise photography, uh, special use permit. They have updated plans that have been circulated to the board. The public care is open on August twenty fourth. And if we can have this surprise table. How are you? All right, just talking about, what are we here for again today? What's the, um, the schedule?
Special use permit for my photography business, um. I believe my architect John dropped, uh, the updated plans.
Yeah.
As well as the, he worked with Mr. Barton on the. Um, updated plan numbers regarding square footage, which is all. Written on the plans. Thanks, thanks for going through. Um, and I'm prepared to discuss some questions regarding, um. General requirements and standards, uh, which you guys don't have, that's my answer. Um, supplementary regulations, home occupation. Would you like me to go through the one at a time, or the answers I submitted good enough for you guys?
I, I mean, I, rest of the board, what do you think? Go through it first.
Okay, for the record.
Let's do it, for the record.
Starting with general requirements and standards, the general standards, one. Location and size of use, the location size and, yeah, nature use of the lowest possible intensity. One starts in the homeowner taking digital photographs and editing on the computer for any location. There is no outside faces operation and no impact the public outside the studio. Guidelines per one hundred slash B five three B two. Um, as for design qualities with the adjacent neighborhood thoughts, the building design and the two basically designed. As a two car garage that is adaptable, so it's good. Twenty years from now, we move. The next person wants to come in and turn it into a garage, speed garage doors. Actually, they are, um, double French doors can be converted. Um, and keeps in the character of the neighborhood as well as my personal home. Uh, location, nature and height, um, it's certainly this is designed, like I said, a two car garage and a residential block. Uh, number three, no traffic noise, fumes, vibrations or flashlights will be created in the operations of business. Um, when I'm using flash in my studio, I'm keeping my curtains shut, so nothing should be visible from the street, which is about two hundred fifty feet. Um, parking areas, um, as departments, I do not have a staff, but I will have, so no. Parking spot for person for staff will be necessary, but we will have two spots in the residential driveway to, um. Which will require no additional landscaping. Um, environmental effects that go over submitted with the building permit. Um. As far as conditions, they guys on applicable permits, issue of violations is not applied. Supplemental regulations, um, to conduct, to conduct a small scale, low impact business and professional use on my residence property. Um, number one, the home occupation may be conducted within the dwelling, never within exits for building. It will be. Um, the home occupation shall be incidental and secondary to those used sub dwelling unit for resident purposes, um. Before this is my family's primary residence, no alterations to the resident's appearance from the premises shall occur. We did, it's like I said, installed two French doors instead of garage doors, which would be, um. Could be altered by any future homeowner, automobile traffic. There will be no additional, like, outside delivery, no large trucks, no. Large platforms or anything like that. Anything is just as standard as it is now with UPS, FedEx, Amazon. Um, United States Postal Service and traffic will be minimal with one car a few times per week. If three of our friends at my house, I mean, I will have clients. Uh, no toxic explosives, flammable, combustible, um, radioactive materials. I am a digital platform. There's no darkroom. So there will be no development of chemicals. There shall be no outside operations or exterior storage at display. Um, I do not own commercial automobiles and materials. Number seven, no practice shall be wished to have in this to public health, safety. Well, fair, um, no occupation, no create noise, no direct electrical interference, and none of that. Off street parking shall be provided in accordance with one hundred slash twenty nine, um, minimum parking spaces, one. For full kind of way, and I have no kind of employees and are no employees, and then two spots will be provided. Um, a sign shall be permitted. We understand that regarding signage, we have. Maximum of course square feet are two by two, not the minimum. That was added on to. The updated drawing. Um, site plan review, considerations and scope of review. Sorry, jumping over my words. Adequately handle traffic circulation, including pedestrian, uh, vehicle traffic. There will be no pedestrian traffic, and again, um. Just one or two people coming, we will not cause any congestion or just no traffic on my road. The site development will be compatible with. And to just land and building, there is no site development purpose for the few. Number three, the, the site of development, including buildings and landscaping, will not conflict. With the appropriate and worthy development of adjacent uses, which project does not present any complex restrictions that affects the neighboring property. Um, number four, parking areas, the benefit side, typically lose, um, parking attachment and the bulk of code requirements. Um, two dedicated spots will be provided, none are required, this is due to the geometry. Driveway, um, number five, not a good measure, the garden drainage. Waters by sewage operation are proposed by the existing hydra from the site. There is no current management. No confirming property, it's a non-complaining property, um. That the purpose of use consistent with the town comprehensive plan, the use will be consistent with the town comprehensive plan. And the full modifications are allowed for the residential districts. And proposed site plan, we use. Confirms to the land development regulations, the existing building complies with all town regulations and requirements. Um, the planning board referred post sites, the town engineer, no alteration to propose to the site for submission. And lastly, the according board has duly, or has duly considered the comments and recommendations of all agencies, it's interested in the application. Um, the existing building was fully reviewed and approved when it was constructed. We are proposing no changes to the site as a method.
You did a good job going through that.
Um, anyone for the board, any questions?
Your days in the numbers of operations.
Four hours.
Okay, so Monday through Friday, nothing on the weekend, no Saturdays and Sundays?
Maybe very rarely, but usually I work during the week, Monday through Friday. I have a family, I like to spend my weekends with my family. If I'm shooting like this time of year. I'm on location only, so I'm shooting a lot of high school seniors and families, and that's not upon my property. It's on. And outside public property.
Okay, so nothing after. Four o'clock, five o'clock, so you search school every night?
Yes, typically school hours.
Okay.
Anyone else? Is there any, um, separation between your studio space and the. Non-studio storage space and using the non-business property?
Like upstairs was more as big?
It's a little of a physical layout. How, how is this, how are these separate?
Is it scary? I mean.
The walls, it's just upstairs when you, when you.
Yeah, they sit down the plants.
Upstairs is just one big open room.
It's one big open room.
And depending on your, depending on your photo shoots, you'll be staging up there, is that?
Everything is on the first floor.
Okay.
Cause the whole back wall, you notice, has no windows. That was done with the purpose so I can use the whole width of the wall, whether I'm setting up one backdrop, multiple backdrops. And then the light coming in from either the two garage doors. Most of the time I work with shadows, so I usually close the light. Sometimes I might shoot natural light, depends on what I'm photographing.
And what I'm asking is, as far as staging, is like furniture, props, that kind of stuff? Will, will that kind of stuff be?
First floor.
Okay, so that stuff will be coming in and out, depending on the type of shoot you're doing.
Well, I, I have it pretty much on my previous. Change with little.
So it's a staged opening? It's a staged area? You have furniture, a couch drop that way, or?
I have like two chairs for clients instead of. I might have a, like a stool per headshot, the rest is taken up by my lighting and my paper.
Any upstairs is solely private, personal?
Personal storage.
Okay. Right, so we'll continue, go ahead.
Is that, that's a full, like a full bathroom?
Downstairs, yeah, so like, no, there is a closet tub.
Okay.
I use the closet tub as a prop.
Okay.
You can go on my website or Google, like, work no fast, attorney session, that's what I use for. I had it in my last duty and I bought it over.
Anyone else? I'm trying to continue the public hearing, thanks too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearings number three. Next week is public hearing, sir.
Will we get copies of what material was dispatched today?
Foil for it.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure you could foil for it, yes, you can get any.
We can get that within the next couple of days.
Well, I don't know the timeframe of the foil request today, but yeah, absolutely.
So that means that it's not going to the zoning board as for the dispatch with the last planning board meeting?
We give them a. Well, no, we just, and we're not really.
It is not going to the zoning board.
Yeah, so there's no zoning board hearing, variance.
It is not going to the zoning board. No variance is required.
New short term rentals. So we have Lindsay Strandell, ninety seven Lily Lake Road. Application and supporting documents have been cert configured to the board. Right, ma'am, if you wouldn't mind, say your name and um. Your application, would you respond?
I'm Lindsay Strandell and I'm applying for a disruption of government authority.
Yeah. And how many bedrooms do you have? How many people do it that have in the building?
A maximum of six.
So um. Yeah. Do you have to, I take?
Yeah, 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 all copacetic, yeah, everything on your agenda tonight, copacetic.
Okay, so um we do have a sign or something with the numbers there, where you responded. I I don't know exactly the property, where it is in relation to others.
Okay, yep.
Got it on driveways, nothing close to anybody else's. Okay. Gentlemen, any questions?
We just saw we got the letter from the neighbor. When this happened, you put up some screening. And I didn't know what your reaction to that would be.
Um, I don't know what.
Uh it says.
Microphone.
Yeah, yeah, the neighbor ninety nine had asked that you, you go to their porch or deck, it's still both the north porch or that? That could be sprayed, but on, it's on fence between the property.
Oh, I didn't see that before, um sure, I, what would be acceptable?
Split rail?
I think.
Right, I mean, probably something.
I mean, I guess the question is, what's, what are we protecting, we're protecting people wandering over there or view shed, because. You know, I don't know why you have to do a view shed, right?
Yeah, it's a single family dwelling, right, since.
Um on these meetings, how does this? So we're gonna review the application.
Yeah, and then you can open up for public, and then then we'll do open and public hearing.
You know how we did it, sorry.
So was it more of a privacy thing or?
Well, but we're gonna wait, we're gonna let her finish the questions we have with her, and then we'll let open the public hearing and have a public speech on the heck. Or against a project, so um, and what other questions would we ask her on this one, um really not much. The people know the border, where. Where they're able to go, right?
Yeah, I put up some little sticks that are, with our left and things, whether or not.
Have us here, okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions? Not until, it's pretty straightforward on this one, right? Um, okay, so I have a motion open public here, vote second, all favor, any opposed? Any extensions? Hey, most of our public hearing is open. Um.
Lindsay, you can come sit back and.
Yeah, we're gonna let public come up, say your name and speak. Or we're against the property. All right, what's your name, come on up, say your name.
My name is Mark Moreno.
Speak into the mic, sir.
My wife's soon to go.
Mm-hmm.
We're, we're neighbors and um. We're not against what's going on, all we need is. A privacy fence between the house and the house, it could be a part. So our, our deck overlooks her patio. And I think a six foot. Privacy fence close to her house. Um would would solve our problems as far as that goes.
So Mr. Moreno, what you want to do is go from the rear corner of the house, fifty foot back. Was it back for property going?
No, 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 this is your house.
Isn't it the house up, uh right there, that's his house right here?
No, that would be by her house, not by mine.
Well, no, this is your deck, right, this is her deck, so you'd want a fifty foot fence from here.
Not even fifty, no, just a, just twenty to thirty feet.
We said fifty.
No, no, there's fifty feet. This is between her house and my house.
Okay.
Fifty feet, so we're talking about like a twenty feet, twenty foot or maybe thirty foot. Um privacy fence, six feet tall, so. The people that are the transient people that come and go, they won't have to be looking at us and we won't have to be looking at that. Plus I have dogs and every time that we come out of the house, they're gonna get jacked up.
Are these issues that they're going, you're going through right now on a normal basis without the SPO?
Is it happening now?
Yeah.
No. No, but just transient people that will be coming, she's a neighbor, I mean, we, you know, we get along. Um and I have nothing against what's going on, I mean, I shouldn't say I have nothing against it, but it's gonna happen anyway. So I just want to procure some privacy by.
Well, can I just say? We have a deck, she does not, so when you come out, she, we're, she's right there, she just has like a stone. And a table, she just. So all we're asking for is just put a fence around her patio, even for the people that are staying there, they don't wanna look at. Us or see my dogs or whatever, that's what we're talking, and my other thing is. The occupancy, it's a two bedroom. That's what. I don't know where it's a three.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one. Oh, yes, this is the one that's lagged.
Bedroom?
No, no, okay, listen, this is the one that's lagged. The one that I emailed you about, Bill.
Oh, okay, that's the one.
I think you were all copied on it. This was a two bedroom by a permit, a third bedroom. Ulster County doesn't have this yet.
Okay, I see.
Okay, so it is a three bedroom, by by town, understanding. They permitted the extra bedroom. Wow. Why couldn't I tell everyone? Is there anyone else from the public who wants to speak?
Yes, I, I live on eighty seven.
Do you have to speak in a microphone, so people are. In Zoom Lane can hear.
My name is Bob Fisher.
Yeah, we're great, that's exactly what you have to do.
I was vice president of the school board in Wappingers, and I've spent twenty five years developing um engine cells for jet engines. So this is my normal speaking voice.
I like it, if we can hear you.
Right now, my wife is disabled and she's outside, we've had a rough time trying to get into this building, she got very upset and she's. You go in and talk, so that's what I'm doing.
Okay.
Good fences make good neighbors, and I agree with that, the far corner that you see of her property. If you, you don't see, this is a twenty foot rise there, so if you stood up there, you look right into my bedroom window.
Which one, which house is yours, sir?
That one, the bedroom, yeah, so from that very corner. Of her property that's glued in, if someone was standing there, if someone should look. Good fences make good neighbors, when you have a good neighbor, you don't need a good fence. I don't even, I've never seen this woman, nobody's ever walked on that ridge. But now you have transients. And all I would ask for, and when I say by a fence, I wouldn't care if it's a police tower, you know, take. Just so that they know. The end of their, you know, their reign, because it doesn't bother me that much. But you know what I meant, you wake up one morning and you're standing in front of the bedroom with my wife, as I said, is disabled. And you look out and there's three kids standing at the top of a hill looking in the window. The other thing is, is there's a back there, we sunbathe. And it's just, I don't even think, I don't even think there's, I've never been up there.
It's, I mean, those trees and so someone would have.
You can't see from the bottom of your house, if you threw that, that, that line straight. You couldn't see from that house to the our house.
It's, it's very heavily wooded.
Yeah, so I mean, just as long as there's some kind of indication that, uh guess what? There's not a lot of recreation here, but you can't go deer hunting over there.
Sorry, don't mind, address the board, just address the board.
Yeah, that's about it, you know what I'm saying, I mean, it's all woodlot, it's all woodlot, we got seven guys in there in the fall. And um I'll tell you, I could have shot a deer out that window.
Yeah.
Um, only I know there's another house there. Okay? And basically I have no objection to, very nice neighbor. But that's the neighbor, who knows where you're gonna get.
Right.
Thank you.
I saw Dave, so you would want?
Just any kind of property line, property line that meets your property line flag? Yeah, if you wanted to do the, her property lines, you want to fence around her property, I have no argument with it. Uh if, 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 if all I'm looking for is that she indicates to the tenants. This is the barrier of what you're renting.
Yeah, we usually have, we have to make out a stipulation in the, in what you'd have to put in in her regulations.
Cause if you walked out of the back of her property, you could, I'd shoot a deer right there, not even see my house. There you go, um and it's, that's all.
All right, thank you.
The neighbor, you have no problem with, but you don't know who you are.
Right.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good luck.
Dave, anything? Yeah, I was just gonna ask Lindsay, um and we'll get the others in the audience, um if anybody has any other questions. The back of the property that gentleman's speaking of is heavily wooded, um you know, it might be possible to um put signage on trees. You know, please don't go beyond this line, because, because if you actually got to the back of your property line. You're actually looking really down on, into his house, so if they were, if those trees were, you know, just the little signs. Uh no, don't go beyond here, further back from your line, it would allow him to sunbathe in the nude outside. That's what we're talking about, isn't it? Wink, 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 yeah.
That's basically what it is, and it doesn't bother me.
No, it doesn't bother me either, I don't live there.
I mean, a younger person might, you know, might.
Oh, I think they're. You're already up there with EMS. I get it, um and Lindsay, the other side, uh would you be amenable to a thirty foot, uh six foot tall vinyl privacy fence?
I mean, yeah, sure, I, I think it's more that the short term rental people are going. They, you can't really see into my neighbor's property, they can see into ours, so I understand, I mean, yeah, it sounds like a good idea. But it doesn't seem like it would really be affecting.
Once a lease, well, for you to see about two. I live on here, so I don't.
You know exactly.
No, yeah, exactly.
The fence could actually be more of an eyesore than just putting up, as he says, posted signs. Please don't go beyond or.
Okay.
Don't shoot any deer, yeah, don't shoot nobody here. That's probably a good idea.
I think should, yeah. So the board's intent is to go do a property visit and revisit, revisit this, okay? Yeah, I did that time. Can we just get? Then we just maybe walk into the.
Sure, it doesn't have to be like a permanent fence that's like built.
Six foot solid fence, so that you can't see through. Pick whatever color you.
Okay.
Not home deep orange.
If I were to build a fence along just the property line, would that?
Yep.
Be okay?
Sure.
It's allowable.
Well, we're not gonna worry you through the whole property line, they just want from the rear of the house. So then when they go out back of the house, they can't see.
Uh can't be twenty five, they come in six foot lengths.
That, yeah.
Okay. I, I, I'm, I don't really love the idea of putting a fence like right on the patio.
No, no. Sure.
Well, if you went up the corner of your house.
Oh, I get you then.
Started the corner of the house, but the patio sits in, I know the house.
Yeah, yeah.
So the patio sits in, if you went from the corner of the house.
Right.
Yeah, and just.
Okay.
Go thirty feet out.
I get you, yeah.
You'll be fine.
Uh so the board's gonna do a site visit and we'll uh readdress it a week, yeah, lovely.
Switch up for a very.
I'll call you first. I should ask, is there anyone else in the public who wants to speak, be on behalf or against the project?
I didn't see a hands up go earlier, so I figured we were good to go.
Thank you.
I didn't ask to.
Thank you.
Yeah. So next on the. Is Danielle Rom- Romanek, did I say that right?
Uh, Roman.
Say again?
Roman?
Romanek.
That's my maiden name, Danielle Harris.
So this, uh three and five bell drive. And um tell us a little bit about your project.
So we live in a multi-family home and my husband and I live in the bottom portion. It's a really old house that was mostly been renovated in the eighties or something, to be able with their family. So the top half is a one bedroom, one bath. And a couple of kitchens that was converted and topped, so that's where, I guess, comes, two guests maximum. One bedroom, one bath, we primarily just have people on the weekends, so they aren't really allowed. Uh access to our property, they just have in the front porch to hang out if they want to. We're mainly. We, I mean, we live in the bottom, so we're there for anything that goes wrong or they have issues.
There's separate entrances?
Yes, separate marking. I made it very clear, so as they can check in themselves, so they're gonna be there. So it's very convenient for us in thinking of them.
Since you're there, but if you're away, is there someone else to contact?
We usually don't have.
While you're. Gentlemen, any question?
You're hungry?
No.
So easy.
No. Okay, um I'm no republicarian, motion?
Motion.
Second, all favor, hi, any opposed? Any extensions? Anyone to speak on behalf or against the project? Anybody in Zoom Lane?
There is no one in Zoom.
Uh can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
You are, do I leave it open until next week?
Yeah, we'll do that, that's fine.
Yeah.
Thanks for keeping in line, man.
Um but are you closing?
No.
We could, we could close, the clock ticks, we could close and then do the resolution next week.
Well. There's no harm.
Yeah, you're good.
We don't have any draft resolutions for anything. So we'll see you next week. Thank you. Next on the agenda is uh. Being Marie Youngstrom, uh one ninety Holy Corner Road. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of that project? Being none, we're gonna move this off to next week. You guys want to talk about it a little bit, anyway? Next on the agenda would be Michael Rosinski, nineteen Grove Street. Um.
You do.
If you have again here?
Yeah, she's.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's much smarter.
They have any word, no comment, no.
Yeah.
They say your name, we don't put Michael.
I mean, I've never been to Michael's wife.
Okay, tell us a little about that again.
Um, we own nineteen oh three, Michael bought it in um twenty eighteen. I don't know if anyone did what it looks like before, but we.
I don't know if anyone did what it looks like before, but we did amazing work to it, it's absolutely beautiful now. Uh, we lived there for a little bit, and then we decided to Airbnb it out. Um, it is a two-bedroom, one-bathroom home with a little living eat-in area and a kitchen. We only allow four guests maximum, uh, there are two parking lots. Fully fenced in backyard, uh, we've been on Airbnb for two years, we have five-star rating. We vet all of our guests. Um, we try to ask our neighbors periodically if they have any issues and everyone goes well. We have cameras on both of our entrances, we make sure there is no noise, there's no parties, anything of that nature. Um, we try to also give back to the community, we get gift cards for our guests from local eateries. We hire a cleaner that's local, he goes right on the same street. Um, and that's about it, we actually love our little house, we've had people actually buy in Highland after staying in our home. Because they love how beautiful the town is, so.
So, um.
Thank God you sent her up there.
But who is the, um, the emergency contact and how far away are they?
It's probably Daniel, isn't it?
One of us, we're eighteen minutes.
Just making sure.
And this.
And your brother.
Bam, brothers up the street. Mom works in there.
I see that number, I gotta ask how far away they are.
About three hundred, three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet even better, so they're within thirty minutes is what you're saying.
I know.
You're doing so good, you're just throwing away.
Yep. That's, that's a quick no.
Both of our draft.
We did get one comment letter, I think, um, uh, I think maybe you have it, they have it? We've heard, we've heard the concern before about, um, the type of tenants who could rent and what their intentions might be. Not something that we or they can control, uh, but they do vet, so.
So, I, I pause that, but did we open the public hearing?
No, not yet.
So we're gonna motion to open a public hearing, second, all favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? No, no, so seeing that, the public hearing's open, that'll be open until next week also.
You can ask anybody.
Is there anyone from the public, I think, did that before, but anyone from the public?
We're fine, we're fine with it, we're gonna approach the city, he lives next door, I'm, I'm okay with it.
So we have two people that are good for it, that said, love the idea?
I have no problem except.
Do you wanna? Can you say your name and come up? Well, come on up, it'll be.
Jeanne Bohn and I live right next door, no problem with it. So, but I heard about having the fence on the, oh, on the side.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Are, are you to the left or the right? Of the property?
Oh, there we go, she's to the left, yeah, to the left, basically, she's to the left.
Yeah, you're to the left. But there's only a little bit of property, my bathroom looks into their bathroom and stuff, so. When they talk about a fence, the backyard's all fenced in, but something would be nice, it could be on the line.
Yeah, the windows, the windows would be above it.
We'd be looking right over six foot fence, and the windows glazed anyway, so actually privacy for in and out. So we, we put privacy glazing on the windows, you can't see in or out.
So they've already taken care of that before, it's pretty good. Are you anything for me?
No.
What is I just give you with them?
Right across.
Yeah, um, you know, a lot of tents in the front of you. And you, you.
It's fine, oh, one more thing, if they sold.
Nope.
What would it sell as?
It would sell as a, so. Yeah, it doesn't transfer.
Apply to them, they own the house, when they leave, it's, they don't have it anymore.
Yeah, that's short-term reliance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, good question. Alright.
Yeah, it doesn't go with the house.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll continue the public hearing until next week, since we brought the draft resolution, it seems to be pretty straightforward on this.
He should come back next week.
You. That's good though, keep promoting town business, we love it, great job. Um, that's it, you don't have beer next week. Thank you for having me. Next is. I'm gonna try Emperor, Empa, or Garrawal. I hope I said that right, are they here to speak on that or against, or are they the applicant?
This is the one that was.
And he said he was gonna show up.
They didn't show, let's, let's not bring. Well, we'll push them off.
We'll push them off and we'll have to do a little, maybe an enforcement piece.
Oh, that's a good point, I keep forgetting, these are.
Yeah, these.
Violation.
Unless they get a permit, they're. And our code actually says they have to diligently pursue.
So I just not get off of this a little bit, but what happens to those who have applied for? Permits and have not yet applied for an SPR, so I'm saying special use permits for their accessory apartments. Are they still renting these down?
If they have applied for.
S three apartment.
Yeah.
And have an SPR. Remember, it's illegal, illegal apartment, and we're using it as SPRs.
Yeah, typically, um, so how it's happened in the past for me in this town is that if they put an application in. And I have them before a judge, the judge says, finish that out, and then if they don't finish it out, you come back, so I get to. Guesstimate what the judge's sense of like grace period is.
Gotcha, so this kind, this is kind of in that mode we're at right now, so we don't know if you're renting out apartments.
Exactly right, I haven't, I haven't, yeah.
And for those who conduct illegal apartments and are renting them out as SPRs, they're totally in violation.
The funny part about that is that regardless of the grace period, uh, the violation continues. And our code says it's a per day fine advised of the judge. So even with stay or this grace period, it's, it would still apply.
Sorry, that was from my own understanding, so I had no idea what was.
So one right on that sharp turn?
One fourteen Holy Corners, the one that had, it's right on the turn.
A sharp turn?
Come off Lily Lake Road, you go up the hill.
Here's, um.
You go right around a turn, and it's, they got the garage and it sits like real close to the road, the daycare center's next.
Try, look at the map, up on the screen, this Lily Lake right here. And this way, it's that sharp, sharp turn right there, you come up that hill?
Yeah.
Right there.
We gotta talk to them and tell them.
They need to show up or.
Yeah.
Unless you have a lot of parking here, because this parking's like right up on the road.
Yeah, it's seething because the lot in the back, the driveway is right there.
Right, but that's not his driveway.
It's not his driveway.
Right.
Alright, let's move on to the next one, the next one. Dan Critchett, seven Greenview Lane.
Great view.
Great view, I apologize.
Then they definitely won't work.
The older that's gonna happen, so it is, how are you, sir? Yeah, you're doing good, right in the mic. Okay, I'll bring it a little closer.
So, how's that?
Perfect.
Yes.
Tell us a little about what you got.
Uh, well, I'm Dan Critchett, and I'm the. Um, and if I may, you know, experience.
Sure.
Here it was, almost getting scattered glasses, so. Kinda do mine too, okay. Um. Well, I, I didn't know actually about what to say to you all today. Um, I didn't wanna get into a great debate about whether someone accidentally. Driving up the long driveway once or twice every ten years, the most recent case of which. Founded by one of my neighbors at a previous meeting, being two friends of mine who came to a dinner party on eleven, January sixth. Really constitutes impact, or whether people swimming or playing at a pool. One that it should be noted, was actually built with the express written permission of the person now complaining about it. Constitutes impact. Or even whether seeing smoke coming out of my house constitutes impact, because who in the world? Has never at least once forgotten to open the flue in that fireplace? It's no big deal, you open the windows, close the pool, there's the flue, smoke goes out, and you go on with your. I will not hear that, instead, I wanna talk about the benefits of a local law that's been passed governing short-term rent. Uh, short-term rental, which by the way, I have not engaged in for over ten years. Ever since I found out it was illegal back in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. Instead of just living my own, which is my primary own, the only one I own. And I've exercised my normal property rights to, among other things, rent out my place on a long-term or a month-to-month basis. Swap it with other homeowners around the world who go stay in their home. Who will go on the swarming programs. And then one came down roommate, which I did for about a year a while back, all these things are leaving. None of these uses are the business of my neighbors. Or frankly, the town for that matter. As long as those occupying my property, not violating any laws or ordinances. And nobody, nor I, have ever done so, there's never been so much as a single. Incident worthy of a police report or complaint. Nothing unfiled, except that I left my garbage cans on the street for a few extra days. Once when I got called out of town suddenly for a family emergency and couldn't bring them up for three or four days. So now comes the town's new short-term rental law, which I congratually do for enacting. Um, because responsible, well-regulated home sharing all around the world. Is there to stay for the benefit to towns and communities? And you, of course, were aware of all this when this was passed. And unlike other legal uses of private property, which are not regulated by the town. Except for just in laws governing the number of occupants, noise, trespassing and such. This kind of usage is highly regulated and severely restricts both me and my potential guests. Precisely for the benefit of my neighbors. You already know this, but I invite my neighbors to read the restrictions imposed upon me if you grant me the special permit. None of the things, and unlike any regular legal tenant who has possession of my property. I'm required to get any short-term guests to sign off on noise and disturbance laws. Show them the property boundaries that they must not cross, in fact, there's a copy in my application. That is posted in my own. Um, I'm required to get them to sign off on the prohibition of hosting any parties or events. The prohibition of street parking, the location in my home of fire alarms and extinguishers. And a host of other things that could potentially disturb anybody. And unlike any other long-term or month-to-month tenant, who legally speaking would be responsible for their own behavior. In this case, in short-term rental case, I instead am personally responsible for the behavior of short-term guests. I'm the one who has the permit, and I'm the one that can be sanctioned, held accountable, and I can even lose my permit. It should be a comfort to my neighbors. That issuance of this special permit is temporary. It has to be renewed every ten years, and it can be revoked anytime. And it should give. It does give them someone to complain to, other than the police, namely, the town board. Um, or the zoning department. So in short, I can't figure out, I really can't figure out why this special permit isn't being perceived. As a good thing by my neighbors. In fact, I think they should be begging you to issue it, not to speak against it. So many of you have seen my house, did anyone go to my house?
Yes.
Okay, um, it's in a special beautiful spot, it's meant to be enjoyed quietly. And I have no intention of renting to groups, or for events, or to anyone who could harm my property or not appreciate it for what it is. In fact, I don't imagine I'll be renting it out to short-term guests any more than the three, any more than three or four times a year. Beyond the legal longer-term renting and home swapping that I already do. After all, I live there. I spent over sixty thousand dollars to comply with all the restrictions and regulations required. By the privilege of being issued a short-term permit. Sixty thousand dollars. I hope you take that as evidence. That I would take my responsibilities under seriously, and I really wish my neighbors would too. Furthermore, I believe that if you issue it, whatever impact my neighbors fear, whether it's rational. Or irrational, such impact will be actually reduced. Not increased by issuing this thing. Does anyone have any questions?
Good, um, I'm looking at your, I'm looking at your applications on November of twenty-two. And the public hearing would open in January of twenty-three, what's going on the last eight months, I'm a little confused, my.
Um, first of all, I had to, first of all, I had to comply with all the requirements. For putting my house in the condition to make it available for short-term rental. Those things include the construction of a hundred and fifty-foot fence, the reconstruction of a hundred and fifty-foot fence. The reconstruction of a cantilever forty-five-foot deck. From, I mean, from my house, that was not the code, and now it is. Those projects took three or four months, and I'm sure my neighbors can attest to all the hammering and.
It hasn't been used as short-term rentals since November, I mean, this can, what's gone on the last year, no, no renting?
No, I have swapped my home. I have rented in on a month-to-month basis. In fact, uh, someone was there for three months and decided to leave last week, so I'm in residence now. Um, but no, no short-term rental, in fact, I have not. I did not. Um, allow my use, allow my house to use for short-term rental for nearly ten years.
For short-term rental, you just told us that you swap your house.
That's not a short-term rental.
The swap, wait, swap your house, there's a cost. You're swapping a house with somebody else, there's a cost benefit there, I mean.
With all due respect, the attorney for the town. In a suit that they brought against me ten years ago, wrote for the town's benefit. A legal opinion on what constitutes property rights. That are not governable by a town board, among those, and it's a spectrum. Among those, on this end of the spectrum are the right to live in your own property. On the other end of the spectrum, is renting it out on a nightly basis by a hotel. In between, there's lots of things, and swapping is one of those things that the town attorney said. Was, according to case law, all over the state of New York. Adjudicated and essentially decided law, a property right that cannot be denied to a property owner. So, with all due respect, that's not a short-term rental.
I, I have another question. Is it in your application, you have a three-bedroom house, you're looking for eight occupants?
Yeah, there's a whole lot in the living.
Okay, we don't permit that, we're not letting Scott speak to that.
Well, that's fine, I can amend.
Yeah, it's, we govern it by the amount of bedrooms you have, sleeping quarters, is that proper, would you put it, so, um.
I also have an office that could have, you know, I mean, sure, I can allow it to six.
And then, I see the twiz floor sounded all, was your emergency contact, where are they local?
All of those costs, you're right.
Where are they?
And, and, okay.
So they're within thirty minutes?
Yeah, just, oh, yeah, that's a very, okay.
So this is the property you just guys.
Yeah.
That's been repaired, that was five grand.
And I apologize, because I, and now that I'm familiar with the property, which one it was, you know. And I apologize, because I, now that I'm familiar with the property, which one it was, you know, so yeah, um. I can get a chance to come out your property afterward, after this was submitted to us, um, this week.
But yes, Dave, all the, all the code violations have been.
We've done all the inspections, I signed the C O. Recently. Yeah, maybe, yeah, I don't know how long ago, but recently, but. So, yeah, it's all copacetic.
Anyone else? Sure.
The deck and the fence were uncrashed, but inside the house. Because I have a pool, I'm required to install alarms on the doors so that any. Guests could prevent their child from going out to the pool without being alerted. I've installed fire ladders in my upstairs bedrooms. I've installed five or six additional C O and. Let's see, the smoke alarms, um, I've repaired an interior railing. Quite a few things.
Pool has an updated alarm in it too?
What do you mean the pool?
They have a displaced, uh, a displaced alarm usually goes in a pool. So if somebody goes falls into the pool.
I didn't do.
It's a displacement.
I didn't do the inspection, but I, I got the word from my folks that the property is copacetic.
I, I had to have fence of gates repaired so they're open properly. With childproof.
It was a lot.
Yeah, so that's what took all this time in answer, long answer to your question.
Well, the other answer or other question was, were you renting it out in that timeframe?
No, just swaps in a month to month.
Paul, I need it. I need it something, and we need to put a pen down.
And I think, uh, Dave and I should look at the, um. Question of house swapping, I'm not sure, and I think that's an interpretation issue.
Yeah, it was a legal opinion, no.
Yeah, I think Sean wrote it.
You have that, I would say that I'd love to see it, because I understand it.
I'll dig it up.
Yeah, could, well, and, and regardless how it, um. Fits within the new short term rental law. Because basically the short term rental law speaks to rental. As being, uh. An agreement granting use or possession of the residence in Boulder and Park to a person or group in exchange. For consideration valued in money, goods, labor, credits, or other kinds of consideration.
Yes, but they're also providing me the equal, the reason I believe.
That's why.
This is not, yeah, a rental, is they're providing me equal consideration. Right, and appearances itself.
It's a zero, it's a zero sum, it's a zero sum. So the residential rights, I think the residential rights. Are built into the property, right, this is. Yeah, there are set amounts of rights in the property.
Well, he is the authority having jurisdiction now, right, so.
And I'm very, I'm very charming.
Basically going forward to see if he qualifies. Or an S D R.
So right now, uh, since we started on this and he spoke to this, the building and property are compliant. With the, uh, property maintenance code and the residential code, it's copacetic.
Okay, that's what we care about, so. Um, all right, so other than that, I would say we would change anyways, we would change the, uh, amount of people or bedrooms, okay? It's, it's not just because, I mean, anyhow, if you can sleep on a counter, that's, you know, and we don't want that, we don't, definitely don't want people.
And frankly, I don't really want one sixty one house.
So that occasion should be changed for that also. All right, so you've spoken on that. Anything else from the board questions? Because I, I remember the property now that we were out there, and my only other concerns that point. When you have the alarm in the door. So the other question would be, um. Motion to open a public hearing. So anyways, we can ask them from the public if they have to speak.
Hi, Joe.
Joe, how are you doing?
So since I talked to you last, oh, I forgot my prop here.
You have props too?
I have props. After the last one, um, the council provider said, oh, it's just a bunch of people complaining. They really don't have police reports, they don't have documentation. I'd like to show you. This is the documentation of all the police reports, the zoning reports, the poor cases. He applied for a bed and breakfast, it was denied. This has been going on for sixteen years, okay? So this is not somebody who's just being crappy about the whole thing. This is something who's been. Living with us and putting up with this for sixteen.
Who would the crappy person be? Okay, just make it, I didn't know if you meant him or you.
No, no, I will, I will be crappy, but hold on, okay? So. I contacted the previous owner because we were trying to figure out the size of the stuff that tank, which determines how many people should be allowed. The previous owner said it was sized for three bedrooms, okay? So his ads all say ten people and I talked to Dave Barton, he said, there's really no way they could enforce. I would like to suggest that if he advertises ten people, he's in violation. You, you have to put a maximum of three bedrooms on it, and if they're going to advertise for more than that, that should be considered a violation.
Joe, we did, what we did is two per bedroom, he's only going to be allowed six.
But, but he'll say, oh, I'm only doing six, but his ads says ten.
And we checked the ads, what are we doing here?
If the edge is ten, I, I would expect him to be in violation.
And we have expressed that. Go ahead.
Okay, so, um. He said he hasn't been renting it in the time period he has, I've logged it. He says he's the primary residence, he's been there forty days so far this year, okay? So if you look at how many months are left in the calendar, there's no way this can be considered as primary residence. He lives in New York City, he works in New York City, he makes his money in New York City, this is not his primary residence. So I don't think he should have a star attention, I don't think he should have an. A hand star attention, I don't think.
And if you, if you could, and I give all due respect, just bring to the board here the issues that you have on the S D R.
The main issue is I put up with this. Biggest worst problem is the nude bathers, okay? As, as recently as Memorial Day weekend, I had people over as guests. On their way out, when you went to visit, you didn't come and look at my property, but it's, the pool is very close. So to walk out of my property, you have to walk from my house to the garage, and there's his pool. There's a naked van in the pool. Okay, I have a two year old granddaughter. I can put up with naked guys, I've seen them before, okay? I don't want my two year old granddaughter to have to see that. He says he's responsible for the actions of the people who rent his place, well, then. Put into it, and this is not the first nude bather. We've had multiple nude bathers. Okay?
If there are organs on nude bathing in town.
Not even in New York State. Not, only in public.
I'm not attorney, I'm just throwing that out there.
We've got mega condition. Because being so close, I can see that.
If you want to go skinny, you can go at night, you know, go do it in broad daylight where everybody can see. The size, he wasn't that cute, you know what I mean? If I read the law, the law says. Special use permits. Now, if the following are not met, the special use permit should be denied, okay? I gave you a list last time of the safety and the health issues that were documentable. And I think at this point, you look at it and say. We denied the, the bed and breakfast application. And now we've got an unsupervised bed and breakfast, and it's time to deny it.
So, and I don't normally answer to any of the, you know how it goes, but then every now and then I've gotta say something.
Yes.
So again, as I have expressed before. That since there was no S D R rules or ordinance in the town of Lloyd, it was the wild west.
There is, there is rule, there was an interpretation, I have a town attorney that says. He is in violation, I've got it right here in the bag.
Listen to what I'm saying, we're talking about S D R. Short term rental, there has never been a short term rental law in effect before, what date was it, Paul? Year and a half ago, last year?
There was an interpretation, which is the same thing as the law, there was an interpretation by the.
So we're talking about today was the new law that has been written, so whatever that was before is not what he's applying for. And we have nothing to do with that law, okay?
You can say this started from when this was, was organized. But the fact is, when you listen to him say, do we believe him? It's time to look at the history, what went on before, so all of this stuff about, I never rented it, I've got.
No, no, I, I, listen, now it's my turn. What I'm saying to you is, now that the law has been imposed, and if he gets his, um, permit. Anything that he does in violation of that law, then he will be held accountable, but before it was the wild west. So they wanted to have nude people walking up and down a driveway, that was on hand.
There was no way to enforce it.
I'm not sure that, and you and Dave, and I can't amend it, and Dave not owning that part. What we do is a yearly inspection on the properties to make sure that they meet the code that's there. We also would hear from the public, um, the amount of complaints that would come to the town, say the police department or to our board. Uh, to the town board, and we would listen to say, okay, he's got five violations against him that are pretty impressive. That the neighbor has got some leg to stand on now, you know what I mean? And then he wouldn't get a permit. So I'd say this, it's like a brand new baby, okay? We don't know what he's liable to do at this point, but all we can do is hope that he follows the law that's been imposed to him. And I hear everything that you're, you're concerned, every one of them. I, you know, but, but we did do an evaluation, I think, from the police department, and I've gotten a letter from the chief. That there was maybe even one medical, was it?
I have seven violations in my bag, if you'd like, I'll copy them and send them in.
You could do that fifty bucks, and we go, yeah, but again, we are only going to base any, um. Uh, violation from the time he gets his permit, if he gets it, from the time he gets his permit for the next year.
But those violations, those violations were pre S D R.
That's, yeah, yeah, that's why so we can all do it today.
Right. So what we're doing is, we're gonna enforce this S D R law. If he's a violation of it, he, he loses his permit.
It comes from the neighbors, we don't, we, you're right, we can't, he doesn't have somebody on his.
Pretty short rentals that were against the law, and he admitted they were against the law, he says he hasn't, I got him locked, okay? So what you're saying is, he has a history of, of ignoring the regulations. And so when you say, oh, we're gonna start over from fresh.
Yeah, because.
Why? Because he's already demonstrated that he has absolutely no respect for regulations.
I, I, I hear everything you're saying, but Paul, maybe you could, just on the legal end of it, just so you understand where we're going.
It's just for denying a permit based on, uh, past record. Um, but what the permit does is it, it, it's granted for a two year period. So anything that happens over that two year period, if you come back. You know, and, and you say there's, it's continuing issues, it's continuing impacts are occurring. Then the board will be able to take that into consideration and consider that in terms of whether or not to issue it. Uh, all through the chair indicating, you know, if during that period, there are continuing problems, continuing impacts. Um, and they're brought for the attention of the building department, police department. Uh, those claims can result in, um, not only enforcement action. Uh, with the local justice court, but also could result in the revocation of the permit.
Right, so nothing in the code that gives you a criteria, we don't, we don't say. Um, it's three strikes and you're out or anything like that, it's totally up to the discretion of the building department.
Nope.
No, there, there, there are, um, there are standards in the code that they have to be, and the, that complies with those standards. Needs to be enforced by the, by the town.
Mr. Critch, can we add no nude bathing to your house rules, please?
Anyone else want to speak, um, I can handle it again.
Robert Benson from Two Great Villains. And I, I think I'm here just to present the, the boon of the neighborhood and of the community. And it's no secret that when we were here nine months ago, we had an idea of this discussion back and forth. And from a neighborhood standpoint, nothing changes. The hundred percent against this commitment, whether it's a short term or a long term, B and, B and B or quantum B and B, whatever might be. I think just the fact that the applicant. Has been basically forty, sixty thousand dollars for the renovations in your property, depending what kind of improvements. Without the need to have this application, would you get, maybe these improvements, or would you just live with a broken chimney, broken deck, or a pool or whatever? He was forced to put it, I, I didn't want to do that. But I, I, I kind of get the feeling, and, and I'll pass it on to my neighbors, that. This is almost a foregone conclusion because of the new law and this and that, the, the application is probably wanting to improve, I don't know, but that's my feeling. But the feeling in the neighborhood is not like the other two short term rentals you had tonight, when people were in fear of it. And everything was peaceful and calm, it's not that way in the neighborhood. It's a point where one person can make life miserable for eight or nine or ten households. And at some point you have to stop and say, is that right, is that fair? And do we great people deserve that? Do the other people in Highland deserve that? Do people in Lloyd deserve that? I, I'd like to think it's a number of board that would have a will and a courage and take a stand and do the right thing. Because if that isn't done, if that isn't done, and one person can basically make life miserable. For eight or ten households who have been living there, many of them for decades with no problem. It really comes down to the only one open question left. What was the planning board?
Thank you. Anyone else? You're, you're welcome to come back up. Okay, up front, yeah.
I'm just want to set a couple facts, sorry. And then just. Off the one opinion. Well, years ago, I think it was, um. So I've been in my house for fifteen years. Yeah, about two or three years after I moved in, um. Oh, I beg your pardon, the year after I moved in, I did in fact apply for bed and breakfast, um. Permit, I thought, anything else? I'll let you ask, I'll let this one house. Um, for all kinds of reasons, that was denied because that's not the best suitable, uh, use in my neighborhood, which of course I. Agreed with once I went through the town process and realized, um, that made no sense. I then, uh, used Airbnb to rent my house out on a shorter term basis. Approximately a year later, um, I was issued a violation for a proper, for something, um, and I paid a fine. I went to court and I paid a fine, and I promised the judge that I would no longer do that. Because I travel a lot and for, and I live alone, we have a big house. Uh, I wanted to get as much value out of, as I could out of the home. So I joined swapping programs because everything I had read up to that point said that swapping wasn't rental. And I also rent the house out on a long term basis, month to month, which I happen to know as a real estate agent is a legal use of the home. Um, and. The amount, the fact is that the mountain of evidence in the bag was two years of, um. Trespassing on my property, right, to write down license tag numbers and describe people. Standing at my pool in frilly shorts and things like that, the colors of clothes they were wearing. And. Most of those people, I mean, among them were my father, my cousins from Tennessee, lots of people, anyway, um. A, whatever it's called, was filed by my neighbor to force the camera prosecuting. For alleged short terminal. This is ten years ago, and after discovering that. After my explanation of what every single thing on the four page list was, I mean, I had to go back and call people, were you at my house? You know, um. You know, on June the tenth of two thousand and seven, um. Everything was explained, the town realized that there's really no evidence there in short-term rentals, and. Got the, got the case. Um, and since then, I'm contented to this house in the way that I'm already described to. Um, so those are the facts. As far as your opinion. I, I really have a hard time. Trying to understand. What the terror is up in car, other than mine, going to my house in our quiet little neighborhood, uh, or maybe even two cars. Um. So, my opinion, I I just did it that, I I just, I do, I just don't understand. What havoc I'm wreaking upon the neighborhood, I just, I don't get it.
Well, that's an opinion, that's your opinion, that you feel that you're, you have opinions too, that's why. People have come to this town, and there's been a problem, and now we have laws, and we're trying to, you know, have them, the people do the right thing. And as for, you know, the gentleman in the back to say, you know, that he would hope that we would wanna do the right thing, we have to do. And allow what's permissible by law. And then they file, they they have a permit, and if they they don't file it. Or or they don't do the right thing, then there's a, there's a governing agency that takes care of whether he's gonna be reissued the permit or not. So, so like when you guys come here and say this has been going on for years and this and that. This is what we're talking about right now, the permit that's in hand, he's gonna have, or he can have the SPR, that's what we're trying to determine there. After a year, you guys had violations, or if he has violations, do you have problems and there's documentation? He has to come, right, every two year, every year he has to go, every two years.
Uh, so the permit's renewable every two years.
Right.
But. Uh, there is a, there is a.
So I mean, you know. I don't, it's 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 like we're kicking a dead horse here, well, it's not what, but we understand, we understand that you have an opinion, and we definitely understand that. Please don't ever think that we don't take into consideration, because we all do. But, you know, there's, there's a law, and and we have to follow it. As far as the applicant goes, you understand their concerns, and you understand, let's.
Because there's been going on, there are problems.
And things have been happening over many years, whether they're right or wrong, whether they're founded or unfounded, there are obviously concerns of the neighbors. So for these next few years, if you were issued this permit, and any of those concern pop back up, you understand what's in jeopardy.
Yeah, I'm gone.
You're gone.
As far as, as far as, as far as the permit.
So my point is.
Yeah, sure.
To the gentleman who spoke and said he doesn't know what the planning board does, that's what we do, we would have that same open mind if you if you were applying. Okay, if you were applying, we would have that saying, we can't say what happened in the past. We we hear it, and we understand it, and we wanna make note that if we see them come again from that applicant approval stage, from that point forward. If those concerns are done again, uh, you're in violation, now you're in violation, the governing agency says yes, now to the next time you're applying for that. So it doesn't go unnoticed, and it's not like we're just, um, you know, to Charlie's point, we're doing what we can do with what we have here today. Okay, and you, you get to see that what restrictions we put with your property, or conditions we put with your, your application, okay? Like he suggested no nude bathing in the the daytime or whatever it is, um, you know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna get a complaint, because we get a complaint on that, that's one scratch against you, and. The possibility you do not have near SPR anymore.
I completely understand.
Right.
And. I think this supports what I hope. Is the logical argument that. If the things that have been worried about by my neighbors have occurred. Fred and over by my neighbors have occurred, when I'm legally renting out my house. Then to have further restrictions placed upon me with a short-term rental permit. Protects them. More than I want.
Which is what the purpose of the law is, you know, exactly.
Trying to protect everybody's quality of life, so.
That's.
But you understand it, obviously.
I understand.
A fair lot of people understand.
Really.
Right, okay, fine, thank you.
Thank you, with your pleasure.
Anybody else? Any questions, concerns?
Good. No, this timing was, what's the next, is he on the next week?
Yeah, because, yeah, you're gonna be on for next week, then who either approved it this move or there, so keep it open, keep yourself all the caring on. So next week.
You wanna drop those?
And you heard some of the conditions on there, so at least on, we, this property now is coming back to me, I remember. Thank you for refreshing my memory and all of it, so. But um, there we are. But your public meeting's still open, I didn't close it yet, come on up. Say your name.
Anthony, Anthony.
Okay, and where do you live realistically?
I just wanna know what residential means. If, my understanding was when you bought a house, residential, it's for families. Okay, and that's my understanding of our neighborhood families. But when you have a house that's being rented out like a motel in your residential neighborhood, that's not anything. At least explain it to me, it's changed or what, but my, what the house instead of these six, it was residential only.
The use is still committed pretty, but Dave, give her the definition of the present, if you don't.
That's why I have a problem with, you know, we. We never do, we're decent.
Well, he's not operating a business out of it, in other words, I'm saying, um. He's, but it it's not like a popcorn factory or something of that nature, we're doing what I'm getting at. So people still living in that home is still a residential dwelling. Okay, that's. It's still considered residential use, yes.
I think there are reasons, the families and things in there, and uh. When you have. Also, it's kind of like, I'm a family or residential, you know, and that's what I have an issue with. Basically, residential, you know, families, no rentals like that, hotel. Transient people coming and going all the time, and uh, you know, you do get a, you don't know who you're renting to, you say, I'm sorry, you know, some things you does. You know, so, you know, as a woman especially. So, yes, I do have a real fear of, you know, my neighborhood. Where people coming in and going, I lock my door all the time. I lock my husband out of the house when he's stuck with grass, I ask, you know, it's.
People took it for trustworthy man.
I know, it's, it's worse than that, okay, so.
So you protect yourself all the time, always lax.
Okay, but what they say. So that's my residential meaning, you raise your kids there, you have your families there, it's for families, it's not for your own business. You know, using the house, swapping these people, like I said, that your neighbors don't know, neighbors know names, I know my neighbors, you know. But, not not one particular, one truth, never there, ever turned against me.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. So um. We're gonna move the rest of this off the next week, on this one also.
Yeah.
Well, there, is there anybody else?
Is there anybody else?
Somebody else is back there.
Anybody else wants to speak on behalf of it or not? They've given up. Yeah, we're good, alright. I don't think there's any else on, tell me your job, man. Do I have a um?
Motion, yes, second.
In the far back.
Uh, Young Sprum, I have a short-term rental appointment tonight.
You're extremely.
At seven o'clock, I just.
Five thirty.
Five thirty, what?
Five thirty, we're.
Next week. So I didn't, you can do it real quick.
I'm so sorry.
You're obviously convinced that you are here, so we said you were out.
Yo.
Seven o'clock, sorry, just talking about, sorry, what you got, your time mixed up, yeah, I could tell you how many times I've done that.
Sorry about that, okay?
No, you're fine, so stay here and speak into the microphone, and we'll do yours and see what.
Thank you so much, uh, Jean Marie Youngsrum.
And tell us a little bit about what you got there, your property.
Uh, I I am at one ninety Hollins Quarters Road, and I have a rent-a-burdened barn. I've been there twenty-three years. And um. I have a. A three hundred and fifty square foot, um. Little, well, I used to rent it out long-term, uh, it's a like an efficiency apartment, and uh. I am, I've been retired for two years now, and I don't want somebody there permanently, so. Turn the Airbnb thing.
Okay, so is the barn is separate from your house, where they're gonna be renting, yes?
No, the, I have, no, the the married bar is three thousand two hundred, three thousand two hundred and ninety square feet. And the little efficiency apartment, is it in the front of the barn? Yes.
The front one's. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's the green.
And how many bedrooms do I have in your house? I don't have that application.
Um, I have uh four bedrooms and like a, an added room on the third floor.
How many bedrooms are in this park, you mean a short-term rent?
It's, um, it's one room studio, three hundred and fifty square feet.
You don't allow two people there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
And how many, how many bedrooms does the house have? Because that's what we got, there's five bedrooms in the house.
Yeah, we have it as five.
I think we're pretty good there, too.
Yes. Yeah, two is fine.
Okay, and um. There's parking at designated area where your property is?
Yes, um, yes, I have these terracotta markers, and they are flat with it.
I don't really remember that much.
It's known as the Nick, the Nick Arturo used to live there. In the, it's a piece of snow cone.
Absolutely, I used to do maintenance in that building, I remember that, years ago, from Mr. Argieroff, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Argieroff.
Yeah, well, I think it's his wife, I used to do the work.
Yes, yes, she built a house, couple, couple houses down.
Nice property. Anything else to ask? What else you got on that? I think that was pretty open and shut, too. Um, it's a lot to do the versions. Yes, that would be. So um, anything else from the staff? No, so we could open a public hearing, while you're here, if you don't mind.
Motion.
Second, second. Alright, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, any opposed? Any extensions? None? Most of the public hearing is open, so we're gonna keep it open until next week, and we'll get a draft resolution drawn up on this. What?
If you wanna like, to see if there's anyone who wants.
I know, but I'm not seeing many people anywhere up to the building. But I will ask now, okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on or against this property? Hold, did you have some anyone in the day? Are you gonna speak out? So, okay, that's fine, so seeing none, we'll keep this open until next week, too. Draft, draft, let's.
Next meeting at seven o'clock.
Next meeting at seven, seven o'clock.
Workshop is five thirty, regular meeting is seven, it's on the website.
Okay, I'm very sorry, yeah, I've got it for you for taking.
We, they just don't have to be here, right? He doesn't have to be here for that.
It's up to you guys.
No, no.
I.
Yeah, your button's right.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Great meeting on time, though.
Hey.
Thank you so much.
So can I have a motion of adjournment? Send it here, all favor?
Aye.